Jesse Thackery died earlier this month. And I'd like to request that our agenda this evening reflect a minute of silence for, in honor of Jesse as part of our meeting opening items. So 4.3A or something to that effect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Let's observe that moment of silence now. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is adoption of the agenda item 4.04. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed or abstentions? Thank you. We've adopted the agenda for this evening. Public comments and requests. Ms. Goodell, are there any?
Yes, we had one from Carolyn Bruce who wrote in support of Mrs. Oppenheimer's public comment from September 10th, and it was to address the need for better communications to parents regarding scheduling changes to the school calendar.
All right. Thank you very much. That'll be entered into the record. Next, recognition and reports. Dr. Jones. Oh, no. First, we're going to do the VSB A media honor roll. Every year, the VSB A and this board recognize members of the media in our community that support our schools. We are blessed in this community that we have not one, not two, but three folks in the press who do an outstanding job of helping the community understand the schools and what we're up to and what we're doing. And so we want to recognize them at this time. I'm going to step down here so I can shake your hand. I think Andre came back for this.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
First, make this. Paul, your question.
Thanks for all mine.
They want to get them all together.
Is that you? It's you very much. It's great to see you.
And then finally, Andre.
How exciting to see you.
I've seen a ghost. Welcome back.
I heard from that guy. He's got me.
Well, it was touching good for a while, but apparently.
Can you get your phone?
It's out of hospital. It's okay.
You enjoying it?
What part of the state? Thank you for that.
Hopefully it was, you know.
All right. That was fun. Thanks for all that you gentlemen do for us. We really appreciate it.
Madam Chair, hi. I would just also like to extend a personal thank you to Mr. Taylor. I could always email him with any story or anything that I needed to be included and have it covered, and I really appreciated that while you were here. And we missed you. I definitely missed you in being able to send any story or anything that I wanted you to come and cover your way. And I really appreciate all of your time that you put into the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Curtin, for that. All right. Now, Dr. Jones, the VSB A Academy Awards. Okay. Together, we'll get it on.
We are recognizing several of our school board members tonight for the VSB A Academy Awards, and these are accomplished by attending professional development throughout the year. And our first recognition level tonight is the recognition level, which is 15 to 23 credits in a year. We are recognizing Charlotte Highland, Greg Resnick, and John Lawrence. Our next level is the achievement level, which is 24 to 47 credits per year. And this gets a certificate and a bronze pin, Justin Castillo. And our next level is the honor level, which is 66 to 83 credits over two years, certificate and a gold pin, Mr. Karen Sharp. And if I may just add that we, from our perspective, have another VSB A honoree that VSB A didn't honor, and we argued with them. And that is for Susan Carney. She did a tremendous amount of professional development last year, and we were all under the understanding that if you went to National School Board Association, that VSB A would also count those points, and they did not. So congratulations, Susan Carney.
Guess I'll have to be more particular in what I do this year. All right. Thanks for that. Congratulations to my colleagues for doing your professional development. That's an important part of what we do to be effective board members. All righty. Next is the annual school safety report.
I am standing in for Sevi tonight at Padilla because he could not be here. And this is just a quick update for you that we try to do at the beginning of every year, and Lisa's going to look like Sevi down there and flip it. And just to start out, on the very first slide, it just gives you the update on what we told you we were going to do in FY13. We did complete card readers on some of the doors at George Mason just to secure some extra spaces. We also did a new intercom system at MEH just to make it a little bit safer. You could actually, you know, hear people, but you couldn't see them, which was not very safe, and so we worked on that last year. We are also still working on the new exit for MEH. That was supposed to go into place this year with the pedestrian plan, but the city has that on hold right now as they're reviewing all different aspects of the pedestrian plan. At Thomas Jefferson last year, we added the child safety officer. And as you know, we primarily did that for construction to help with recess and all, to keep children away from the construction zone. We've kept that child safety officer there because we just saw such a need for it, and that's been a great addition. And we also at Mount Daniel have replaced the pedestrian gate to make that safer. We've also added extra cameras. And in FY14, on the next slide, at George Mason, we have added a private security, Securitas, at George Mason this year, which has been excellent to have at the front desk. Probably one of the biggest benefits for us is that when we run with our own security staff, if somebody is absent because they're sick or their children are sick, we really don't have security level person to be at the front desk. With Securitas, we're always guaranteed to have consistency at the front desk and make sure everybody is signing in. We've also, that allowed us to take our other two officers that were at GM and be able to mobilize one of those frequently throughout the day to do outside patrols so that we have somebody out and around on the campus. And we did purchase a golf cart as our safety vehicle, and it works great. We're still working on the fence and the gate around GM and MEH, and right now, that holdup has still been with Virginia Tech and UVA coordination, and so Sevi's working hard to get that done for us. We're also replacing cameras. Probably our biggest safety has been all the cameras, the software around the division at all school sites because we needed a large upgrade. Our cameras, if you watch some of the video, it would almost like it would stop for a couple of seconds, and it always stopped at the wrong time when you really wanted it to keep rolling. So all of that is being updated right now. We're also doing cameras on some of the bus loops and playground areas that we didn't have before, even for some of the night supervision. And we're also, our camera upgrades will continue. We try to upgrade cameras every year as just part of our ongoing safety and security. Then also, these are some things that are coming up or that are taking place right now. We had a, we will have a division-wide emergency response drill at the same time, and we're continuing our emergency training for staff. And I would say one of the biggest changes since last year is our coordination with city staff. When we have division leadership, the police have been coming and sending a representative usually just to update us if there's anything that we need to know from their end. But also, most recently with our lockdown drill, they were at all four of our schools to make sure that they understand how our drills and how we operate during safety procedures and to make sure they're comfortable inside the building. You know, I know Mary Gavin talked about this, but just because you're a police officer doesn't mean you're comfortable around eight-year-olds. And so getting familiar with our building and being around the children has also been a great help. And then also just replacing things like gates at TJ and making sure our fencing is there. And, you know, we have beautiful landscaping and fencing that went in with the construction. That's been a bonus for us as well. And making sure that all of our entrances are renumbered this year to match Virginia Fire Code. And then, of course, another big safety feature where we're coordinating very closely with the city will be our bus cameras. That will be coming very quickly. So that's going to really, we feel like, keep our children safe for getting to school. So that is our update for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones and Ms. Hye. Are there any questions from the?
No, just one comment. For the public's benefit, I think we had a very effective closed-door meeting with the city police department as well, where obviously we can't talk about what we talked about, but it gave a really good sense of their level of preparation and how they would handle certain things. And I think, I thought that was very effective and would encourage us to keep doing that.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone? Mr. Castillo.
Quick question. So the buses, are they considered part of what's in scope for this review? I mean, it wasn't on the slide.
You know what? I noticed Sevi actually gave this to me, and I thought that really needed to be on here, and so I, that's why I added that. I consider it part of our safety plan for the school division, having the cameras on the buses, for sure.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that up.
All right. Anything else on this item? All right, we're going to move on.
Susan, just wonder if there's an update on the pedestrian plan and where, you know, where is the city in trying to do more community outreach or what, you know, what's the, what's the state of completion of that plan?
Let me see. I think one of the big challenges with the pedestrian plan is that some people that were key left. And so part of that was for them to get somebody hired back in place to understand the pedestrian plan moving forward. So we have already had one initial meeting with the new staff member who replaced Wendy Sanford, blocked Sanford, and that was who was really leading with us on the process. And then another thing that happened for us, a big piece, was the exit at MEH in the front. But with the water referendum and knowing that that would change the zoning of the property if that referendum were to pass could also impact that exit and what we're able or not able to do working with Fairfax County. So the choice was made to wait this extra year and then reexamine that at the end of the year. Now, the city on their side are really looking at the sidewalk issues, and I think anybody who has watched some of the city councils knows, in city council meetings, there's some contentious issues about where the sidewalks will or will not go. We very much need them for walking access in some of our areas, but we're trying to make sure that we're, you know, have a good plan for our kids and they know where to go. And we are actually working today, because we do have some high schoolers who are walking down the street, and it just happens to be Great Falls instead of using the sidewalk side. So we're trying to watch those issues to keep our kids safe.
Just a quick point. I was at the chamber meeting this morning, and there is predictions, again, that we would soon have a traffic light at Route 7 and Pennsylvania Avenue near the Panera area where people frequently cross, including many of our teenagers and others. So hopefully that will, that will occur soon.
And I might just add, I was at the city council meeting where they assured that that would happen, and that was probably about two and a half, three months ago, that by the end of this school year, that traffic light should be in. So we're hopeful.
All right. Thanks very much for that. Moving along, next is the consent agenda. Now, my understanding on the consent agenda is that we have checked with our city attorney about streamlining the process of approving the consent agenda, and we are no longer required to have the clerk read all of the items on the consent agenda. We may simply have a member of this board move to adopt the consent agenda as presented, second that motion, and then either approve it or not. So that's just to let the board know it's a little different procedure now. So is there a motion to approve?
I would be happy to move the consent agenda as presented. It's a huge step forward.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. And any opposed? All right. Very good. Wasn't that just painless as all get out? All right. Next, the core of our meeting business action information, item 8.01, which is approval of first reading of a number of school board policies. And, Dr. Jones, is that for you or is that for Mr. Horn?
I will immediately turn it over to Mr. Horn.
All right. Thank you.
Painless and quick. The good news is we only have 17. The bad news is that that's only about 7% of 260 policies.
I'm going to. Thanks. I'm going to follow in number order, and hopefully that follows the path that you have in the document titled "Explanation of Revisions." And it'll be a little bit out of order from the posting of the actual documents, simply because we made some changes later than the explanation of revisions was created, so Board docs put those things at the end. So I'll reference the code number or the policy number as we go through. The other bit of good news is that 15 of the 17 reflect simply language changes to match the Virginia Code changes. There is one that does not, and then there's one that is a bit of a discretionary use of Virginia Code language, and I'll point those out when we get there. So starting with 3.7, the evaluation of the superintendent, this amends standard five of the standards of quality to reflect that the superintendent's evaluation must include a measure of student achievement. And as I go through these, I'm just going to state the purpose and then move on unless I see a big wave of a hand. 4.23, purchasing procedures. There are two changes here. Line 50 is really a clerical error. It should reflect $100,000. We made a change in the small purchasing section, section eight, last year to reflect the change that the General Assembly allowed that number to go to 100,000. This piece, 50,000, remained, but it should refer to the small purchasing section. So we'd like to fix that error there. And then further in line 180, this is a change from the General Assembly eliminating the requirement that we contact general services to let them know that we have procedures to avoid competitive bidding. So this is a good one. It removes one of our requirements in terms of purchasing. 4.38, school safety and crisis management. Again, it's simply code language to recognize what our obligations are and who has the right to see our emergency crisis plans. I don't think it reflects a change in practice for us. It designates a couple of things like walkthroughs that are not foilable necessarily, and some of the walkthrough checklist that the superintendent and school staff does. It also reflects a change in lockdown drill procedures requiring more than one a year. Now, we were required to do two, and they have specified in first semester, second semester timeframes. The additional change is really not relevant for us, but it's the number of fire drills you have to practice. Used to say in the first month, and now it says first 20 days of school. And that's primarily because we have some people that start school in August, and it expires before there's 20 days. So gives everyone a consistent length there.
Madam Chair?
I had one question on this one on lines 128 through 130, where it says the walkthrough list will be made available upon request to the chief law enforcement officer. Why wouldn't we just automatically share that?
We probably would upon request, if that makes sense. It's not something that I think we would create and turn over unless the chief law enforcement officer was involved in those walkthrough checklist. I think it's something that becomes very routine, and until something is discovered that needs to be turned over or discussed as part of the larger school safety group.
But we would, wouldn't we share with them to get their professional opinion? And they wouldn't know what might be missing if they haven't seen it.
Again, probably through the collection that is the group that conducts the school safety audits in general. The walkthrough itself may be conducted simply by staff, and we wouldn't necessarily automatically go to chief law enforcement and say this is an issue. We may not have one. But as we collect those walkthroughs and we continue to have meetings that involve chief law enforcement officers, then we would be able to share those at that point.
Okay. No, I just, I just wanted to make sure there, there was sort of an appearance of, well, we're only going to give it to you if you ask.
Right.
And that's not really what it is.
That is not what it is.
Okay.
And the inclusion of the emergency personnel in our school safety audit committees is really what ensures there is no impediment to exchanging information that we need to exchange. Okay. 5.44, charter schools indicates, again, code language change, that school board-initiated charter school applications no longer must be reviewed by the State Board of Education before approval. 6.35, remedial instruction program for the regular and summer school. Again, this reflects a change to match code language specifically and exactly, but not necessarily a change in practice for us because we're doing this, but the requirement that we provide targeted mathematics intervention for grades six through eight. 6.4, relations with educational.
Sorry. You're getting ahead of me. On 6.35, let me find the line. Right around lines 69 and 70, we're talked about, basically, my question is, are these services available to someone who's coming from a different school district and who leaves their school district? They're here for the summer, and they were identified in their own school district as needing the help. They can get it here, even though they weren't here the previous year, right?
I, I might answer how we've actually handled that because usually it's somebody who's in a private school that's actually a resident of the city that wants to access the summer course, and we feel if they're a taxpaying citizen and a family that we allow them to access that course in the summer. If a student is from another school division and we offer summer school, and they have a parent that is here and they're a resident of the city, then we would allow them to enroll in summer school. I have not had that request since I've been here, but we have had the private school requests, not this summer, but the previous two.
Okay. 6.4, this amends standard three of the standards of quality that permits the local boards to request the Board of Education for release from certain state regulations. The reality, because we don't currently offer any special purpose schools, such as those provided for in Virginia Code 221, point 26, governor's schools, special education schools, alternative schools, things of that nature, this applies to those specific types of schools for now. But nevertheless, important for our policy to match code language. The next is 8.1, personnel policy goals. This is not a Virginia Code requirement. It is a reflection of the purpose and goals of the Uniform Performance Evaluation Guidelines, and important for our policy statement to indicate the intent of our Uniform Performance Evaluation System.
No, not yet, but 8.25.
All right. 8.25. Yes.
Could I honor the English teachers of America and say that we shouldn't have a split infinitive there?
You may. We'll fix that.
Touche.
And we will adjust that for the second reading. This is where we jumped out of numerical order. My apologies. 8.8 is actually treated as 8.80 in Excel. So we're at 8.25 now. And this reflects eight, again, not a specific code language change, but more of a practice change to indicate that we are no longer requiring teachers to go to meetings and/or trips to be eligible for reimbursements of expenses that they incur for professional development. Professional development can occur anywhere. It can occur in their office. It can occur within our own building. It could occur at home, but there still may be expenses. This allows us to reimburse without requiring a trip. Mr. Lance.
My only question is, does school personnel include central office, or is that strictly teacher? Because it seems like it should apply to everyone. I just don't know if it does normally.
I think it's an application question for the superintendent, but it's not excluded by this policy.
I would say school personnel, is anybody employed by the school system?
8.30, this is a title, a title change in addition to quite a bit of substantive changes, adding the word emergency before first aid because there's a specific training for emergency first aid, which is different perhaps than advanced first aid or other first aid situations, and then specifically adding the AED component to both the title and then the rest of the policy. It also changes the number of employees required in each of our buildings to receive training and/or certification, and that's a significant and/or. There are training programs that result in education of staff, and there are certification programs that result in the achievement of some card certificate or otherwise notice. This policy requires one or the other. And there are, the number of staff is not a change for us in the sense that the policy will change, but our buildings are all staffed above these minimum levels now, so.
This I anticipate would apply to our Cherry Street facility when, and when that is on, online.
If we have a building with 10 or more, the policy would require these trainings. We, of course, would be free to provide those trainings no matter how many employees we had in the building.
And especially at Cherry Street. We would adhere to that because of the special needs situations.
No, he read my mind.
Scary. Yes, please.
Okay. 8.35, probation and dismissal. These do reflect changes to the Virginia Code. The first is line 11. You'll notice those words, "or placed on probation," have been removed from the Virginia Code, so that is no longer an option at the end of the procedure. And then a clarification on the definition of incompetency to indicate one or more unsatisfactory 8.36, and I'll note in advance, you'll see this one again next summer in probably greater detail. What we are attempting to do with 8.36 is to close a significant gap that exists between our previous policy, the current administrative code, and the current Virginia Code. The Virginia Code and the administrative code do not mesh. General Assembly changed it. The grievance procedures to go into effect July 1. Regulations from the Board of Education are not available yet, so the addition of that language would allow our staff to defer to using the Virginia Code language should we have a dismissal proceeding during this school year and prior to the Board of Education issuing its guidance.
So, Madam Chair? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So my only, I mean, I assume Virginia Code always controls over the regulation. Is it something we need to even kind of say, or it's kind of?
Well, I think the other option we could have is to remove our regulations which refer to previous code.
That's what.
8.30 This is a title change in addition to quite a bit of substantive changes, adding the word emergency before first aid because there's a specific training for emergency first aid which is different perhaps than advanced first aid or other first aid situations, and then specifically adding the AED component to both the title and then the rest of the policy. It also changes the number of employees required in each of our buildings to receive training and/or certification, and that's a significant and/or. There are training programs that result in education of staff and there are certification programs that result in the achievement of some card certificate or otherwise notice. This policy requires one or the other. And there are, the number of staff is not a change for us in the sense that the policy will change, but our buildings are all staffed above these minimum levels now, so.
This I anticipate would apply to our Cherry Street facility when that is online.
If we have a building with 10 or more, the policy would require these trainings. We, of course, would be free to provide those trainings no matter how many employees we had in the building.
And especially at Cherry Street, we would adhere to that because of the special needs situations.
These do reflect changes to the Virginia Code. The first is line 11. You'll notice those words "or placed on probation" have been removed from the Virginia Code, so that is no longer an option at the end of the procedure. And then a clarification on the definition of incompetency to indicate one or more unsatisfactory 8.36 And I'll note in advance, you'll see this one again next summer in probably greater detail. What we are attempting to do with 8.36 is to close a significant gap that exists between our previous policy, the current administrative code, and the current Virginia Code. The Virginia Code and the administrative code do not mesh. General Assembly changed it. The grievance procedures to go into effect July 1. Regulations from the Board of Education are not available yet, so the addition of that language would allow our staff to defer to using the Virginia Code language should we have a dismissal proceeding during this school year and prior to the Board of Education issuing its guidance.
So, my only, I mean, I assume Virginia Code always controls over the regulations. Is it something we need to even kind of say?
Well, I think the other option we could have is to remove our regulations which refer to previous code.
That's what I was going to ask, is would it make more sense to just substitute the existing Virginia Code for this year in the second reading? Because then there's no sort of, I'm almost concerned if we did have, God forbid, but if we did have a termination situation or anything that required it, that we may be sort of setting ourselves up for someone who's, you know, at law going to require that we look at the, it seems to me that the cleanest approach would be, hey, adopt the Virginia Code for this purpose until the regulations are here.
I certainly don't have an objection to that, it would certainly be simple enough.
I'd say whatever is easiest for the community and our staff to understand.
It would, I mean, Karen, tell me if you agree or anyone else from a legal perspective, I think that adopting the code would be the easiest to understand, it would actually be less confusing. Just use the code, that's what controls.
Agreed. Thank you.
Well, I'd ask one question that might buttress that, and that is, I think there's a difference between a difference and an inconsistency. So, you know, I think anything that can eliminate that wiggle room is good. So, if going back with the existing code is the way to go, great.
Remove all existing language and refer specifically to 311. Done. Can we bring that to second reading with that change as discussed? And that will also remove, the superintendent will also remove the two regulations that follow it that are also now outdated. Okay, 850, 8.50 Professional Staff Members Probation and Continuing Contracts. We have, again, line 11 is a code change. The Board of Education no longer prescribing specific documents necessarily, but permitting certain types of documents as long as they contain the required elements that are listed in the administrative regs. That one's not a significant change. As we get to lines 32 and the, I guess, 32 through 34, it is the more significant change to the Virginia Code which changed the probationary term from a statutory maximum of three to now a window of at least three and no more than five. So, the language we've offered to you tonight is exactly what the code says, which is a minimum of three and a maximum of five. And then there's one additional, you go all the way down to line 136 on that policy, and that is code substitution language to define the term supervisor in an instructional capacity, adding the word instructional supervisor. You say supervisor of any position. Okay with that one? 856 is sort of a mirror of the prescribed permitted language, it just has, relates to extra pay for extra duty contracts. And now we're jumping back numerically, but 8.8 Personnel Records. This is, again, a Virginia Code change that relates to a non-education section 40.1 which deals with the release of personally identifiable information of staff. And it indicates specifically that the teacher performance indicators that we would use in evaluations are not to be released. They're confidential, and then it lists the conditions under which they could be released. And you can see them there pursuant to court order, grievance proceedings, things like that.
In line 28, is it otherwise, does this track the statute? Did you say?
This is exactly.
Okay, so it's required by law, not permitted by law.
Correct.
Okay.
This is, you'll see a lot of red here, but it all relates to one concept and it provides a condition for satisfying the division's residency requirement, commonly known as kinship care. This is a provision in Virginia Code that sunsets in 2016, but it is in place today. So, in terms of satisfying residency requirements for enrollment, it's important for us to And 921, this is not a Virginia Code change, it is a clarifying statement for non-resident student admission and tuition. The previous language left some, I guess, question about whether we were offering continuation of student status being subject to board approval and to tuition, or to tuition, and/or to tuition. And I think this language reflects what the superintendent would like to see happen when someone moves out of the city but asks for a brief extension of enrollment. So, this one can be wordsmithed if you like.
I guess my only question is, should it be the superintendent or should it be the board? Doesn't the rest of the policy reflect the board making the decision?
It depends on which policy. When you're looking at the beginning of the year, there's actually, which is like this 20 days and that short amount where it actually comes to me, if they can actually prove that they're moving in the school division. And then there are interrupted residents which do come to the school board, which is where they're, they could be gone for an extended period because they're renovating their home. But at the beginning of the year, we do not bring to the board those, it is 20 days at the beginning when they're moving into their house, you know, closing two weeks after school starts. Those actually come to the superintendent. So, we're trying to keep that consistent on both ends.
Okay. I misread that, I thought it was you bind through the board even on those. But, that's it?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And 930 is a brand-new policy. Again, as required by Virginia Code, the superintendent's required to create threat assessment teams using the Virginia Center of School Safety Model Guidelines. This isn't a big change for us either because we have those policies and procedures in place already. The code's sort of just catching up with us.
So, the language from this is straight from?
All read, straight from the code. And 934, a rather simple change in terms of deleting four words and adding one, but it is somewhat significant in terms of the notice that the superintendent may get from the court system where previously only an adjudication of delinquency or guilt was passed along. It's now notification which covers a lot more criteria, including not guilty or charges Okay, and then 938 Medicines. This was a new policy a year ago and it's been changed to add a new class of folks that we can allow to administer the non-prescription epinephrine, and it would include members of the local health departments, public health nurses, those folks who we contract with in Fairfax County, for instance. If they were in the building, they could also administer.
No? Yes? There's nothing else?
I'll move that the school board approved first reading of school board policies. 3.7, 4.23, 4.38, 5.44, 6.35, 6.4, 8.1, 8.25, 8.3, 8.35, 8.36, 8.5, 8.56, 8.8, 9.17, 9.21, 9.30, 9.34, and 9.38.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. All in favor?
Do we need to clarify that 8.36 is going to be replaced by the Virginia Code language instead?
No, so just first reading.
Okay.
When it comes back for second reading, we'll approve it as amended. So, I was calling a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? No abstentions? No. Thank you, Mr. O'Hara. Good work.
Thank you.
Yep. I think that's fair. I'll hold it though till we get to this, into this portion of the meeting. Okay, the next is the approval of the superintendent's amended contract. It's the next item on our agenda. What I'll do is ask for a motion, and then if there's any discussion of comment on the part of anybody on the dais, we'll do that, and then we'll call for the vote. So, is there a motion to approve the contract?
Madam Chairman, I move that the school board approve the amended contract for the superintendent to reflect new contract dates effective July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2017 as discussed in closed session.
A nice second.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments people would like to make on this item before I call the vote?
Yeah, I'd like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
So, I'll be leaving the board this December, and I just want to say thank you for everything you've done. I'm so pleased that we're extending your contract, and I just think you've done a fantastic job and I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Goodell, can you bring me the copy of that amendment? The reason I asked for that is, Mr. Lawrence just reminded me, I think we're extending that contract through September 30, 2017, not through June 30, 2017. Because we're trying to, we're trying to have our contract run October 1 to September 30.
I think he changed the ending, June 30th, so that you didn't.
The contract renewal says to, compensation goes with this.
See, that's even better deal, so we'll get it for free for this.
For three months.
Good order, Tom Moore.
Madam Chairman, I'm not entirely certain about this, but I think there may be a four-year limit on the term of the contract, so that if we did want a September 30 renewal time, we might need to go through September 30, 2016 rather than June 30, 2017. And that would, you know, that would set us up for then a four-year renewal from there. Or a four-year timeframe that we could extend from that point.
Right. I'm going to suggest we leave it as it is and sort this out. For the community's knowledge, throughout the state of Virginia, contracts for school employees run from July 1 to June 30. This board is wanting to switch that up for our superintendent so that we have student performance information in time for her evaluation and contract extension. But we'll, we'll just approve this tonight and we'll try to sort out that detail. It's added a number of levels of complexities as we've tried to go through the process because it's so very unusual. Tom's giving me a look from the back of the room. Come on forward if you have something to say.
Code requires superintendent contracts to end on June 30. And Mr. Sharp is right that the initial term may be, no, may be two, but future terms are four.
Yeah.
So, required end on June 30 and a max of four.
Okay. Okay. That's, I guess that's what happens when we try to layer on a for-profit concept on a nonprofit organization. So, we'll have to figure out how that's going to work for us.
I don't want to speak for Hunter, but if I may, because I know Hunter looked at this, since he's not here tonight. And when Hunter was actually working on this, and, because I, he was explaining it to me, and I was very supportive of having the evaluation in September, but the contract was ending on June 30th, and also for the benefit of the school board because if there, hopefully this will never happen with me, but if there was a bad situation, you would be stuck with the superintendent until September and not actually a June 30th date as well. But that's a whole different issue. But that's why he said it at June 30th, but the evaluation and the way it's written in here is still September.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. Any other comments from anybody up here on the dais?
Just to get us off the technical matters for, for a little bit, you know, there, Tony's been with us now for two cycles and it's just been a joy to work with her, I think particularly through this time period when we've had a finishing of a building as we did ribbon cutting for the other night. There's such a tremendous workload that Tony puts into, into everything, but I think particularly into that. And I want to say she demonstrates a very, very sound assessment of priorities and gets things done in a priority manner. And I really, really appreciate that. I think a lot of times I'm guilty of, you know, sending in questions and comments that may divert anyone from that kind of sense of priority. But she stays with, she stays the course, puts in the time that's necessary to get those priorities accomplished, no matter what it is. And I think she does just an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Yes, Mr. Lawrence.
Just one clarification.
Yeah.
The evaluation will still be done in September, right?
Yes, by September 30.
Right. No, I just want to make sure because we changed the policy to make student achievement part of the evaluation. So, I just want to make sure we're being fair. Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is what's interesting about our little Commonwealth. All right. I do want to make a comment about what we're getting ready to do here. I would echo Mr. Sharp's sentiments about the superintendent. When we hired Dr. Jones two years ago, I would say the board was conservative in terms of the compensation we offered her in the length of her contract because she was, had never been a superintendent before and we weren't sure how it was all going to work out, although we had high hopes. Now that she's been with us two years and has shown the outstanding work ethic and knowledge and expertise that she has for this job, the board is really taking two steps here. One, we're extending her contract to four years on a rolling basis. So, each year unless Tony tells us or we tell her, we'll automatically be extending her contract for another year. The second is, we're making some adjustments to her compensation to begin to get her into the range of compensation of other superintendents in this district who are her peers and her colleagues. As with all of our staff here, it's going to take us a few years to get her where she needs to be, but we want to underscore for her and for the community the confidence this board has in Dr. Jones and our, just distinct happiness with what she's done for our school division. So, if there are no other comments, I'll call for a vote on this matter?
Well, I just, I don't want to pile on, but I do think Dr. Jones is certainly exceeding expectations and I look forward to many years working with you.
Thank you. That's the kind of piling on she would like to have.
Madam Chair, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, we can.
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Dr. Jones, on a good job well done. All right. Next is a quarterly budget status report. Since Hunter is not here, Dr. Jones, are you going to present that to us?
It is me. I really want to see if I can find my notes sort of really quickly because that'd be helpful for me, but I'm so thankful to open up. This is actually a new format that Hunter has put together for you. And what he has done is he's tried to give you a first quarter financial that really gives you a breakdown of where we are at the moment. And I think, you know, that because he is a financial whiz, that his reporting beforehand, sometimes if you were really understanding finance, it was easy, and if you didn't, then it was difficult. And this was a request of Chairman Carney to see if we could simplify a little bit so that you can track quarterly a little bit easier. When you look at where we are in the FY14 budget, what he's giving you is where we are, what was planned in FY14 for federal funding, and then you can actually see what we have received and what is the remaining, which is zero as of right now. And that's very normal for this time of the year. We have a lot of federal programs like Title I, and that funding will come in. We have a lot of federal programs like Title I, and that funding will come in. You're looking at the state sales tax. State sales tax, he did increase a little bit in the FY14 budget, and you may remember us talking about sales tax was up a little bit this year, so he made that adjustment. Also, looking at just the general fund transfer, how much has actually been received. So, it was good news tonight to hear that we're on track, that we wouldn't have a mid-year adjustment where we could, I guess, lose funding. Also, just looking at other funding. And other funding is the one that is probably a little bit different, and that is just things like our interest, our tuition, any sort of rental from, you know, soccer and the different people that use our facilities. And so, when you look out to the side, you'll actually see where it has $44,600 in state funding is the variance there, and then we also have that $411. It looks like a deficit, but again, that's because it's almost like a placeholder in the budget. So, if we happen to get a $150,000 grant for safety and security or something, we have somewhere to put it inside the budget. When you look down on the bottom, you're looking at our spending, and this is where we've been pleased to start the year, our salaries and wages, doing all of the hiring that we did this year. By the time everything's settled, when you look on the far right-hand side, you can see that we are in the positive, that $140,784. What that means is we had a certain amount of retirements. We budget right around that $85,000 mark. If we have some first-year teachers, that comes in less. And again, you know, I think one great thing about this is we still had cost savings, but it's probably the best hiring class we've ever had, and we're really proud of the team that we put together. Then we also have savings and benefits, obviously, when you have savings in that. When you look at purchased services, you'll see that there's a positive of $28,720. That's primarily from Arlington Career Center. Having fewer kids, we have to budget accordingly, and so that's almost the bulk of that $28,700. Materials and supplies, we expect to expend all of that money. As you know, our budgets at the site levels have been flat the last couple of years, and we have a lot more children, so we're certain we won't have anything left there. Looking at capital items, again, those can be things like buses and the things that we need. The one good thing this year on the contingency reserve is that we didn't touch it. And if you remember, last year, before we ever started, the first day of school, all of our contingency was gone to hire staff. And again, just to commend the school board on the budget that we put forth last spring, where we funded, number one, the teachers that we knew we were going to need, we were able to hire high, high-quality staff by getting jobs posted in March and April, and we haven't had that huge looking for staff when school starts. That can be such a challenge. And then also just other transfers and reserves, and that's what balances that line item up at the top, that $411 deficit. So, that's letting you know where his projected ending position would be as of today. Now, behind that, sorry, is this a separate agenda item? Let me look. Does he have? He has it going, okay, thanks. For the first quarter financial report with recommended adjustments. And what you're seeing here, because we have the cost savings down on the bottom, Mr. Kimball's tried to provide for you what we are requesting tonight as an agenda item, to take some of those savings from salaries and wages and add to increase in two technical positions and also our community outreach. As you know, our community outreach coordinator position works 25 hours a week, and I'm not really sure she ever really works 25 hours, quite frankly. And we are at the point where the community outreach that we're doing and what's in this work plan, for instance, the ribbon cutting last night, the technology forum, that's the position that really helps me coordinate all of those things, so we're asking to increase that to a full-time position. And then the two technical positions, the number of students we've added, the new staff, just the technology that we have, we're just finding that we need two more positions. The other thing that's impacted us this year is often in the summer, we can allow people to take vacation. We have a very, very dedicated team of technical crew, but none of them took vacation in the summer. So, when somebody goes on two weeks' vacation, and you're doing that with a whole team, every two weeks, you're down a person. And so, we're also feeling that, and usually we're able to coordinate that. But I also feel like that's going to be an issue the next couple of summers with the amount of construction we have going on. Below that, you'll see that would also have an increase to the benefits. And again, this is coming out of the cost savings from the beginning of the year. Then down at the bottom, looking at the contingency reserve, these are requests that we have right now that would come out of the contingency. That would be $45,000 for the Division Efficiency Study that we have in the work plan for this year. And again, if you remember, the original cost here was going to be $120,000 through the Virginia Department of Education. And so, by working with Gibson Consulting, which I'll talk about that later in the agenda, we have that down to 45, where they really look at the key areas of our operations. And we're wanting to fund that now, and if we fund it now, and again, I'll talk about that later, but we will have it for Budget 15. We'll have all of that information. $21,500 for a seven-passenger van. Our van is breaking down, and that's just not a great thing. We need a new one. And then we are also requesting, because we did have the cost savings, at TJ, while we had all the construction crews onsite, I went ahead and knocked out the two doors so that we could do two lines. We knew at TJ, one of the things that we would want to do, because that building is over 700 students, is reconfigure the actual, the line, so that when the kids come in, you have a hot on both ends and cold on both ends. But that does have a cost of about $60,000. We were thinking we were going to have to wait till next year, building that into our maintenance budget. We would like to do that now. Their lines are moving too slow, and it would be a great efficiency, and just better for children and staff, and getting those kids to the cafeteria. So, what that would do, when you look down on the bottom, is that would give you $207,148. And you can kind of look at this in two ways, in that Hunter has given you the realistic taking down salaries and wages and benefits, and then what would come out of contingency, or you can think of it as really you've used $42,000 of the contingency. So, that is our recommendation tonight, to be able to take care of some district issues.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Okay, I'm going to ask for questions on this chart. We have other agenda items to consider, the adding of the positions and the other pieces and parts, but at this point, I just want to make sure everybody understands what was presented.
Just a question on when we'll have some indication on food service and any financial first-quarter data on that.
And he actually, in his memo that he sent, said he will be bringing that, I think, at the next meeting for food service. They're still looking at that data very closely right now, and it is looking good. Yeah, it's definitely up, so we're excited.
Good, maybe shaking her head, too. All right. Any other questions about this? Yes?
Yeah, just the second lunch line at TJ. Could you explain that a little more? How is that $60,000 spent?
What it is.
And how quickly can it be done?
We can have it done in about 10 days. It's very quick, because one of the things I tried to look at proactively was making sure all of the outlets, whenever, you know, the building was empty, we made sure the doors were cut, the outlets are ready to go. What it does is it adds, it's mainly equipment. Kitchen equipment's expensive, but it does last for, you know, eons, and gives you a hotline on both ends and a cold line on both ends with your registers in the middle, so that students can enter the out. You have two lines where they enter on the outside, and then they're able to exit on the inside, where TJ traditionally ran one line, just one long line. And when you're getting over 700 students, it's just almost impossible in 25 minutes to get kids in and feed them and make sure they have time to get outside for recess as well.
So, it's not really construction, it's just getting the equipment?
It's actually the line. It is, it's kitchen equipment and getting it put in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does the second line require extra staffing?
It actually does not. Right now, what they've done, we had a modified plan. That's why we went ahead and knocked the doors out, and they've been running semi-two lines where the kids come in through two doors and then they exit, but it's very slow, and so it'll allow the staff actually to operate much more efficiently. Yes. Yeah.
Susan, I have one other question.
Yes.
It used to be that I thought food equipment often came out of the food service fund. Has that changed?
Well, I think, given last year and the difficulty that we had and the amount of money, but we try to do that. And I think as we start turning the, you know, the margin again this year, we'll be in a much healthier spot.
This is kind of a one-time use of...
Definitely.
...general money to deal with this.
Right.
Thanks. I was going to ask that same question. Any other questions about this report? All right.
Well, Madam Chair, just maybe a comment or two. If I understand correctly, please chime in if not. For one thing, we have unanticipated surplus here. We have some savings, as Dr. Jones pointed out, from our experience with hiring. We also have increased sales tax revenue that we did not anticipate having as the budget was being passed when we adopted that last spring. And so, this is money that is in addition to money that we thought we would have available for this budget. And we're working within that total sum of the unanticipated amount to deal with the items that are coming up later in the meeting. And just to clarify also with regard to sales tax, I know we've heard from the city side that sales tax, for their purposes, has experienced a decline. Well, I think there's two points potentially to make there. One is that the sales tax that we receive on the school board side is really a different tranche of money than what is received by the general government. The computation of the general government's sales tax is dependent on local sales, local commercial activity. The computation for the school side is dependent on statewide sales tax activity. And I think there's a different time period involved here, too, in that our money that's showing up here as being more than we had anticipated is money that was happening in May and June, commercial activity happening in May and June, whereas the city's experience of sales tax revenue not as high as had been previously. I think that also covers into the July-August period. And so, you know, there may be some slowing there that we may see come out in our sales tax as well, but we haven't experienced it yet, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I would just ask Dr. Jones to thank Mr. Kimball for this report, which I think is wonderful and gives me a lot more insight into the inner workings of our budget as we go across the year, and I look forward to seeing next quarter's report. All right. So, let's move along now to a few items that this is the foundational knowledge for. The next item here is approval of the recommendations that Dr. Jones just discussed, to the use of those savings to hire the two technology positions and to reclassify and expand the hours for community outreach. Before we have a motion, I just, Dr. Jones, if you could tell us just a little bit more about these two technology positions, what kind of positions are they? Where will they be housed? What will they be doing?
What we're actually doing is adding one more. It's a mid-range systems engineer with quite a high level of technical knowledge, and then we're also looking to add one more site-based technician. Right now, we have one at Mount Daniel, we have one at TJ, and we have one who floats between MEH and GM, and we really want to get a fourth one in place, so that we can have somebody permanently at GM and permanently at MEH.
Okay. And the system engineer is school division one?
Yes, yeah, they work as a team.
All right. Very good. Thank you. So, is there a motion to approve the use of these funds?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the Foster City Public School Board approve utilizing FY14 savings for the hiring of two technology positions and to reclassify and expand hours for the community outreach.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you. Any questions or concerns or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? No, thanks very much. All right. That's approved, Dr. Jones.
Yay. Mr. Chaney will be very excited.
All right. Next is the approval of a transfer from the contingency reserve for the purposes of purchasing the van and doing the lunch line at TJ and the efficiency study. So, let's have a motion for this, and then I'll see if there are any questions or discussions, and then we'll take the vote.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the Foster City Public School Board approve transfer from the FY14 contingency reserve not to exceed $126,500 for the purposes of purchasing a seven-passenger van, expanding this Thomas Jefferson Elementary School lunch line, and funding an operational efficiency study.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes.
Could you quickly elaborate on an efficiency study and exactly what is covered in an efficiency study?
If you'd like me to go ahead and we could look at 8.06, and that's where I actually will walk you through that. You want me to go ahead and do that? Yeah, okay.
So, these are kind of out of order. Okay, so let's...
Madam Chair?
Put this motion to the side and go to item 8.06, and we will come back to take a vote on this motion after 8.06.
In our efficiency study, we're working with Gibson Consulting, which is out of Texas and does most of the efficiency studies in the state of Virginia. There are seven key areas that the efficiency study will look at. Facilities, which is maintenance and custodial, not only looking at staffing, just, you know, how we order our products, everything that you can imagine. Transportation, they will also look at food service. Financial services, which does include our accounting, budgeting, purchasing, automation. We're also looking at technology management, as well as human resources, project management, and the total hours will be 200 hours, and their rate is at $185 an hour. And the study estimate, I mean, the study right now is at a cost of $42,000, and you'll notice we put a few extra thousand in there, so if there is an extra extension or one area or something we want them to look at, we'll be able to do that. But it's very comprehensive. You'll get, the report is not what we would get if we were doing the $120,000 study. It'll probably be about 35 pages, very pointed and very direct. And I've been working, literally, just the last couple of days with him, trying to really get this down to where we need it. If it's approved tonight, I will have a PO in his hands tomorrow. He will be here in October, comes out onsite, works with us October through December, so that we have it for FY15 budget.
Mr. Chaney, just by way of background, a number of years ago, like four or five years ago, the state offered these services to school divisions. We've been on a waitlist for a number of years. I've been a proponent of doing this, because I think it's important that we look at best practices and benchmarks of other school divisions to make sure that we're running and as efficient possible, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to know on the record what scope of it was, so...
Yep. All right. Any other questions? Discussion? All right. Very good. I don't know that we need to actually approve this study. I think if we go back and approve the contingency...
So, Madam Chair, could I call a question on 8.05?
Yes, thank you very much. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? All right. So, to review the vetting, at this point, we have approved the hire of some staff. We've approved some shifting of money from the contingency fund, part of which is to be used for this efficiency study. Okay?
Do you, I mean, would the superintendent feel more comfortable if we approved 8.06?
Would you like us to formally approve it? Well, we put 8.06 in there because you've actually moved the funds, but you haven't really given me the approval to expend them, and so...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd ask that the school board approve an efficiency study not to exceed $45,000 prepared by Gibson Consulting, review to be conducted October 2013 through December of 2013.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Issue that purchase order. All right. Next is the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. Dr. Jones?
This is the new contract. We talked about this last year during the budget, that with TJ, they are undergoing capital planning and expanding on the site. And one aspect of that is that with our tuition in the contract, they are also having a line item that accounts for a portion of the capital cost for Thomas Jefferson High School. And the Attorney General did weigh in on this on behalf of either Loudon or Prince William, one of those big counties, and, you know, it was found that it is okay to do that. What I did is I've also worked with John Foster to make sure that there was nothing in city charter that would keep us from paying capital in another school division, and he did confirm for us that we are fine to move forward with this contract if the school board decides to do so. The way the contract works is that it's $2,074 that we would pay in capital that gets, that would be applied on top of that normal tuition rate. And on the very back page, it actually gives you a good breakdown of what that tuition looks like. And the high school cost per pupil is $12,500. And then there are some other pieces that go with that. So, we have three spots traditionally, you know, that could change over time. If we fill all three spots, then we would pay that additional capital, just like we do tuition for all... The way the contract works is that it's $2,074 that we would pay in capital that gets, that would be applied on top of that normal tuition rate. And on the very back page, it actually gives you a good breakdown of what that tuition looks like. And the high school cost per pupil is 12,500. And then there are some other pieces that go with that. So we have three spots traditionally, you know, that could change over time. If we fill all three spots, then we would pay that additional capital, just like we do tuition for all three students. If we don't fill those three spots, we don't pay the tuition and we don't pay the capital, and, and this is over 33 years. So it's not a huge impact to us if we had, and this will start with next year's freshmen, so it doesn't start with all nine, 10, 11, 12, it'll build up. And the expense to us is just over $24,000 per year additional if we had all 12 students attending. That would be the increase.
Uh huh.
And I put this on here tonight as a discussion item, but you, if you are comfortable to take a vote, we listed it that way so that you could, because it does impact our budget and it does impact our families. They've already had TJ's parent night, you know, they've gone and listened to TJ talk about what children need to be, to, to do to prepare. So if we were only going to have, for instance, two spots instead of three to offset the cost, or the school board was going to move in a different direction, I would definitely want to message that community, to the community, because we have a lot of people who are interested in applying this year. And if, you know, it's the tenor of the board that we're going to move forward because the cost is not outrageous as we thought at the beginning it may be, then that would be great for budgeting purposes as well, for me.
All right, thanks for the explanation. Any questions? Ms. Highland?
Well, I think you just maybe sort of answered my question, but when this first came up last year, we were all a little surprised, and our expectation was that it would be a fairly cost prohibitive addition to the tuition. And has it changed, or is it just that they didn't really tell us what it was going to be last year? I honestly can't remember, but for some reason I thought the number was higher.
When they, when, when they first issued the proposal last year to schools, there were two alternatives. One was this, and the other was a large capital upfront payment, which would have been several hundred thousand dollars. And so that's, so after they went and talked to the various school divisions, I think they heard that was a nonstarter for most school divisions, so they withdrew that proposal and came up with this.
Right, because I felt like Loudon County publicly said that they would pull their students out, as I recall, and I know we all had that conversation, that upset a lot of parents in our community, and so I just couldn't really remember, because this, this doesn't sound onerous.
Yeah.
And it doesn't sound like we're paying for their addition, which is, I think, what some people felt, that, that more of it was going to be paid by people outside of Fairfax County by that, that first proposal. So this is not the case now.
It seems to me like this is a far more fair proposal in response to the questions of the school divisions.
I think it's all right then, yeah.
Yeah.
And if, if I might add, Hunter and I have talked extensively, yes, we work on the budget as well, that we do think it is very doable, and I also think it actually meets, I guess, the letter of our work plan in that looking at alternative diploma structures and opportunities for children. And there are children that really look forward to this opportunity, and it's a unique environment, so we were supportive of continuing.
Yeah. Mr. Sharp, did you have something?
I'm gonna suggest that we defer action on this, and it's not because I don't support it. I, I do strongly support it, and probably would have, you know, even if the cost was a bit higher. But I think there is a lack of community understanding of what this deal is, even though we've been part of this governor's school from the beginning. We, we, we were one of the charter members when this first began, but all along the way, we've had, we've had discussion about whether it's worth the cost, even when, you know, we were just talking about tuition without any, any capital addition on top of it. They're, they're, and, and this has gone back and forth, where at times we, we charged the parents tuition, and then, and then we were mandated that we could not do that by the General Assembly. And so, as I say, it's gone back and forth. It's a small segment of our population that, that, that goes, and that's fluctuated as well from, in terms of the, the amount of interest. In the early years, when I was on the board, there were over 20 people who, who applied, even though we had a much smaller student body, and three people could qualify. Usually, six or seven actually made, made the cut, and, and then the top three were allowed to go from Falls Church City, and those three who also made the cut very often moved to Fairfax County
Yep.
To be able to, to then access Thomas Jefferson. And, and that picture changed very, very radically too, in, in years following, when we, we, we couldn't even find, or I'm not sure that, you know, the total circumstances here, but even, even with a larger student body, at, at some points in our recent past, we've had years where we have not filled the, the three slots that, that we've had available to us. So, so I think it's, it's helpful to get some more information out into the community, some better understanding of what this is before we vote on it, and just allow, allow for some comment if, if that, if that occurs, great. But I'd, I'd like, I'd like there to be a better understanding in the community before we, before we act on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Are there other comments?
Yeah, I guess I kind of, I mean, I, I do support it. I, I think we had a vote when I was on the board last time, and we supported it. I, I guess I'm concerned or unclear why deferring it when this has been such a longstanding community, Falls Church City participation, it's not new, and isn't it important to send a message of certainty to those who may be thinking of pursuing it? And by not doing it, it seems to me we're opening the question that we may not be doing it, and if we're supportive of it, we ought to say we're supportive of it. If there needs to be an educational part of it concurrent, great, but I think that not acting would send potentially a wrong message, but it's my take.
Thanks, Mr. Chaney. Did you have something?
I, I just want to say, I think it's very crucial that we continue to provide this opportunity to all our students. I don't believe that it detracts from the quality of our school systems here. I think all students have the opportunity if they want to attend, and then if they are accepted, they don't necessarily have to attend TJ either, but I think that students within Falls Church are still, you know, offer the opportunity to take, you know, academically stimulating classes in sciences and math, but that students who really do have that drive in those areas should be afforded the opportunity to go there, because it's not necessarily, we don't offer these specialties, and I know a lot of students who have attended there have greatly benefited, so I don't think it'd be a smart move to take that away from them.
Thank you. I happen to agree with you. Anyone else have a, a comment? I'm, I'm gonna say that I agree with Mr. Chaney on, on this particular one. It feels to me like this is really more of a budgetary and financial issue than, and are we going to send our kids and give them the opportunity or not issue? Certainly if it was the latter, we would need a lot of community conversation, and when it seemed like there might be a threat of that last year, there was a lot of outreach, but this, to me at least, feels more like this is just going to cost a little bit more money for us to send the kids there because we need to cover that. So I guess, at this point, I would
Madam Chair.
Call for a motion, and if it passes, it passes, and if not, well, yeah.
So, actually, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Sharp here, and my concern's a little different. There are just a few too many to be determined's in that list that I'm not crazy about, but I agree with your comment, so I would ask that the school board approve the FY15 cooperative agreement between Fairfax County Public Schools and the Falls Church City Public Schools concerning the establishment and operation of Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology.
Second.
Ask for a call.
Thanks very much. If there are no further comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And are there any opposed?
No.
All right, thanks very much.
I'll just clarify, I'm, I'm happy to support this, it's just
Yeah.
I was a bit concerned that there might not be enough penetration of the market, if you will, in, in the community to, before, before we undertook this step. Thank you.
Can I have a quick comment? I think this would be a great opportunity for Mary Beth to write a little piece and indicate where we are, and provide that to our normal forums and get some of that information out there, so, because if it's, if it's not known, then we ought to get it out there.
I agree wholeheartedly. Getting back to you, Mr. Rasmussen, with your comment about too many to be determined's, those to be determined's are directly related to the individual students that might be going, so I'm not sure they could be determined, just to clarify that
It's totally, it's the wording, but it's fine.
All right, thank you. So we have agreed to that. Excellent. It's interesting that this comes around again, and the first time I was running for election, that was the first question I was asked, and in the first community forum I was going to, was whether I would support us to continue to be a part of the Thomas Jefferson group. And at that time, I said yes, absolutely. All right, construction update is the next item. Dr. Jones?
Okay. Last night, we obviously had the ribbon cutting, which was fantastic at TJ, and everybody has settled in there and going well. Next week, we will have our ASAC meeting for Cherry Street. We're right on target for Cherry, and they're working on the design work right now, and we hope that we will be in that building. That's our, that's our biggest challenge, is we hope that their timing allows them to get out on time. But I've put Hess and Arcadis and SHW on notice, we still expect them to get it done on time, so we're hoping that we'll be in the building. We also are working with Mount Daniel. Mr. Lawrence and I attended their community homeowners meeting a few weeks ago, and, and that went well. And then last week, for the first time, we're working with the community on traffic calming, and we did shut Oak Street for parent night. We will do that again tomorrow night, or Thursday night, I think it's Thursday night, for their parent night. We split it into two nights, so we only had kindergarten one night, first grade the next week, and then we closed the street so that there was no traffic, and we had great feedback from the community. And Sevi actually worked the gate down at the bottom and let all the buses pass, and we had parking at St. James. We also ran parking from TJ and ran several busloads of parents up and down the hill every 15 to 20 minutes, and it worked fantastic. So we'll continue that strategy and continue to work with community in Mount Daniel as we look at expanding up there. That's all for now.
Can I just make one, one comment? I had a question, which I think I passed on to Dr. Jones last week. There were some questions in the community about TJ being full already and, and what, you know, what's going to be done if it continues to grow. You had a great answer to me that I passed on. I think maybe an FAQ at some point for the whole community to see that data, that there will be overflow space and et cetera. TJ next year will, will calm some nerves.
Right, our trailers will become available again when we move pre-K out of the trailers, and that will free up some space as we're working on the Mount Daniel second grade solution.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, very good. Those construction updates are always positive. It's wonderful. It's absolutely wonderful. All right, the next item on the agenda is regarding the school board's organizational meetings and leadership elections with the move of our elections from the May timeframe to the November timeframe. There has been a lot of conversation about whether we should leave our organization meetings in July to coincide with the school year and the fiscal year, or whether we should move them to January to take place just after. We have new elections and new people sworn in to this particular group. Tonight, we wanted to give members of the school board an opportunity to, to say what they think about this, and then if it feels like we can, move to a motion to decide when we're going to do this organizational stuff. So before asking for a motion, I just wanted to give the folks on the day's an opportunity to make a statement about their opinion, or ask questions, or do that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Rasmussen.
So I guess I'll go first. I ask that this item be placed on the agenda. So I'm supporting the idea of keeping the current structure in place for several reasons. One is for the reason you mentioned, that it's the way we've been doing it in terms of lining up with the fiscal year. I do have some sympathy for the idea of having an organizational meeting in January. I think that when we do have a new board in January, that they could make a decision to change this structure later, but it's, at least for now, I think it would be better, at least in this cycle, to give some certainty to what board leadership will be, at least through July. And so I would very much support at least asking the city attorney to weigh in on whether or not that process makes sense, and then we can make some decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. Anybody else have a comment about that?
Well, Madam Chair, I think this is inconvenient and onerous, and I think the other fact is, you know, the voters have spoken. I would rather have stayed with the May cycle for many reasons, but that ship has sailed. I, I think for the purposes of respecting the, the franchise of new members and adhering to the will of what the electorate has said about when they want the elections to be, that we will need to have this switch at some point. I think it, it, it will happen this year, or it'll happen thereafter, but it, it seems deeply inconsistent with what's happened with respect to the reorientation of the elections. So we can face it now, or we can face it later, but I would, I think there are enough moving parts that we'll have to, we'll have to face it at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Sharp?
I'm okay with asking the city attorney for advice on, on what the procedure might be for either, either a July or a January organizational meeting. Just as initial thoughts, I, I think we, we should take some, a bit more time in, again, reviewing the pros and cons of this. One of the, the pieces of information that I'd like to understand better is, is how those that have been doing this, that is, having an election in November and having their board members come into office in January, and then having to deal with a budget that's only a few months away, how, how they've handled it, and how they've felt it's, it should, it should operate, and whether they should have an organizational readjustment at that time, or whether it's a hindrance to, to their, their good process. And I think we could, you know, the, the counties have had this for a long time, because the counties have had the, the November elections. The cities and towns are a bit different. We, we've sort of come late to the party as far as going to a November election, but I think places like Fairfax City or Vienna, some of these others that are relatively close by, we, I think we could get a, 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 a well-rounded sense of how this, in, in practice, is being, is being handled by consulting both a county that's done it for a long time and a city that's recently changed, and see, again, what are the pros and cons of, of doing it, and, and then have that information available to us before we make this decision. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Highland, do you have any thoughts or comments on this?
I, honestly, I, I really don't, just because, you know, I feel like since I'm leaving in December or January, I, I don't necessarily, I mean, I understand that, you know, my opinion is for now, you're asking my opinion for now, not for when I'm not here, but I still, you know, I, I see pros and cons on both sides, to be honest with you, and so I don't know, you know, I, I wouldn't not support it, and I feel like we voted, you know, we voted in our leadership in this past July, and obviously, I would like for that to stay, but I, I don't know that I can force that opinion on someone once they're in office in January, so I, you know, I, I sort of have mixed feelings about it.
I just have a question. The recommended action here seems to say that we're saying we want it one way or the other versus writing a letter to ask for an opinion, which, what exactly, if you're writing a letter to ask the city attorney for his opinion, that's not what's written in our recommended action versus making a decision, so which, is there one over the other that you're looking for?
Well, I, for, I know for me, from what I have heard the school board, when we've discussed it, I really wasn't sure where the school board was, or if you're on the same page about what you, what, what you really want to see. We've already asked for the opinion from the attorney as far as what the charter says. I've met with Wyatt about that, what we can and can't do. You know, looking at the pros and cons side, I can certainly put some bullets together and, and provide all that information for you. I mean, I can tell you from talking with superintendents around the state, I have not met one superintendent that is happy to be reorganizing in January that has to do it, simply because for, like for me to be presenting the budget at the same night you're reorganizing is incredibly difficult in the work that the chair and the vice chair do with the superintendent. That's a challenge, but certainly if that's a challenge that I need to tackle, then we'll make it work. The other aspect is just that, in working with the city charter and meeting with Mr. Shields on this, the, the school divisions that do reorganize in January, the superintendent is not presenting the budget in January, and they've actually pushed their budget dates back. By our city charter, that would require another change, doesn't mean we can't do it. Mr. Shields and I have also talked about that. The request would be to push the budgeting back. That also impacts another issue for the city from Mr. Shields' perspective, and that is is lining up that fiscal year, how they've talked about changing that date, which then would allow him to also push his budget back. So it's several different layers.
So, Madam Chair.
Just one sec, just, just one second. Let me just say a couple of things. First, let me just say that regardless of when we reorganize, it's not my intent to run for chairman again, so I have no dog in this fight, other than as a member of this board as the rest of you do. So I just want to be clear about that. Second, I did have a lengthy conversation with the V S B A on this topic a few months ago when the election was moved because I wanted to, there, there's really the best place for us to go to understand the experience of other school boards. And what I learned from her is that most school boards, when there's election in November, have done their organization in January and it has been difficult for the school board because most school boards like ours are trying to reorganize and get settled in the middle of a fiscal year, in the middle of a work plan and very close to when they start the budget process. And so that's the feedback that I got from her. Just from my own personal experience, I would say that it would be a great challenge to be elected the chairman the same night that the superintendent's presenting the budget. There's just so much that happens during the budget cycle that the chair and the vice chair are working closely with the superintendent on. Now, that's just one person's opinion. So I think to me, this question comes down to, certainly we're going to have our elections, we're going to have our elections, but, but do we, does this board organize based on what we think is best for running the school division or is it really a political decision? And I think that's kind of what it comes down to. So just wanted to make those couple of comments. And yes, Mr. Rasmussen, you had something?
Yeah, so I just, I wanted to, I think we need to think a little, about this in a little bit a different way. And that is that, you know, our board and our board leadership, our board leadership is what would be described as sort of a, you know, they would call it a weak mayor form of government. It's a weak chair form of government in that the chair, with all due respect, is sort of a first among equals, that all of our votes are the same, there are no extraordinary powers of the, of the chair, other than those associated with basically having discussions with the other side. So the idea that in some way we would be disenfranchising future board members, the idea of having at least efficiency in operations versus, you know, some kind of immediate board leadership change based on elections, to me, it's a pretty easy call. I would vote for efficiency in operations because I think it's the right thing to do for the system, for the schools. And in no way do I feel like that any new members that are elected in November are disenfranchised. I mean, everyone on this board has the same equal vote in anything. I mean, I would be curious, I, I even think technically if we wanted to, we could remove you as chair in the morning if we decided we wanted to. So I don't, I, I really think this is more about what is best for the school system in terms of the calendar that we have. Well, those things could change because if the city, I mean, depending on what they do with the fiscal year and everything else, it may make sense to do an organizational meeting in January, two years from now. But I think for now, at least in this cycle, it would make sense for us to sort of stay the course that we have and let the future board wrestle with that when they come on. So that's where I am. Just wanted to make it clear.
Ms. Lawrence, do you have something?
Just two things because everyone else has pretty much covered it. One is, I, I think we, we really just need to focus on the school year, not the city fiscal year, not the federal fiscal year, not the calendar year. And I think the idea of a school board deciding to organize itself in the middle of a school year is, is just rather embarrassing. So, and that's separate from the budget and everything else that would need to be pushed back to be able to do it efficiently. And secondly, in terms of disenfranchisement, I mean, we have one of our candidates left, but I, I've talked with all three of them and frankly, and Margaret and Michael told me tonight that I could say that they all agree that we should stick with July because doing it in the middle of the school year doesn't make any sense, which is, I guess, logical since two of them work in schools and they realize that you have a school year for a reason and the school board should be focused on, on that. So maybe down the road, we'll have, you know, a board who will want to switch it. You can't always rescind a vote and throw people out, but I think right now, well, under Robert's rules.
No, I actually didn't call the SBA on that issue because when I was exploring this issue, I just wanted to know, can you actually overthrow in the middle of the year? And you actually elect your chair for the year and unless they step down, you cannot actually overthrow the chair or vice chair. So.
Sweet.
Right. I just checked that out as I was trying to answer all the questions.
Okay. So, but anyway, I, I think for a lot of reasons, logic being one of them, we need to keep it in July.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Curtin, do you have something to add?
Yeah, just, you know, personal experience coming on sort of in February, March, in the middle of the budget, right before there. I thought it was very hard for me to catch up and I wasn't even, you know, really expected to understand everything or go through all the responsibilities. So I think it'd be very hard for new members to, you know, do that and reorganize everything. But I mean, it's also sort of, my impression is that all the new members, and granted this is sort of a unique ele- election year with, you know, the vacancies matching, the people who are running, but it seems that all the school board potential, school board members are being welcomed and that there's not going to be this crazy transitional shift anyway. Right? I mean, so I would, I would be in favor of, I don't know, maybe.
So what are you saying here?
Just, no, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just saying that I think it's important that, like everybody else, I think what I'm hearing is that it's important in July because you don't want to leave the students and the staff without a direction in the school year.
All right. Thank you. Just add one quick. Yes, we are trying very hard to orient our new members so that the transition isn't as chaotic as it might otherwise be. Yes, Ms. Highland?
If there's no way that we can kick you out in January, then wouldn't it make more sense to have this vote in January?
I don't know.
I, I just, based on what I had said earlier, how, you know, I, I don't mind voting on it now. I don't, my opinion would probably be the same as everyone else's, but if you're, you're going to be the chair until July anyway, wouldn't this make more sense to have this as a vote with the new board?
I would say the only challenge with that would be, we would have our first meeting in January with a newly sworn in board who would have to make this decision, perhaps act on it, receive the budget. I mean, it just feels like a lot to me, but, but that's certainly an alternative, so.
Can I ask you a question then? I mean, what happens if you do nothing?
I mean, the, the rules of the board are, I mean, the, the leadership is elected at that time. I mean, is, would we have to make a affirmative move to choose to reorganize in January?
Well, in checking with V S B A, thank you. In checking with V S B A, if we made a decision that we wanted to reorganize, we actually could reorganize one time and it doesn't really match code or anything, it's just that they, you'd, you'd be able to go ahead and do it just because nobody's probably going to take you to court over it. But you could do it one time and you could make that choice to do it in January. But, but the, one of the reasons we have it on here is so.
So that, that.
Before we move on, let me just say something. I, to me, I think the more important issue is that as the city charter today says that the school board and the city council do their organizational meetings in July. I don't know what the city council is going to do on this issue. I don't know if they've discussed it. Last I asked, they had not. So if we chose to do nothing, we could go ahead and reorganize in July unless the city council decided to change the charter. So the reason we want to have this conversation now is because we want to be able to, to go to city council and let them know our preference so that they take up the charter matter, we have input to that. Right? And we, they may still change it, they could change it and whatever that says in the charter we would have to do. Right? So we don't really have a ton of control over this anyway, but I think to get the sense of the board and be able to talk with John Foster, let him know what we think and talk with the mayor and kind of, you know, work through this, it would be important at this time. Yes.
Well, Madam Chair, a, a couple of issues in response. First of all, this all goes back to why I think changing the elections was a bad idea. Having said that, we are where we are. And, and I can say I told you so and that doesn't get us very far. But the question is, so what do we do? And I think what I'm hearing is that we don't know what to do. I didn't say that we need to do anything yet, but I don't think the decision is to keep doing what we've been doing because that's what we'll do if we don't do anything else. I think there are a lot of moving parts here and I think the better question to the city attorney as well as to the city council, which I think would make changes to the charter with respect to things that impact us, if and as requested by the school board, is to figure out, well, what do we want? What makes sense? How do we align all of these pieces? So rather than simply stick with the status quo, I'd respectfully suggest, let's start thinking about these things, let's start making preparations so that we can, to the best extent possible, adjust to what has become a pretty disruptive change in the electoral cycle that's had a lot of downstream effects. You know, with respect to an eventual January transition, you know, to Mr. Rasmussen's point, I, I don't think the operational efficiency of the board would necessarily be as diminished as we, you know, there are no indispensable members of the board. I think we all work together and I think we would continue to work together come what may. So, you know, let's, let's figure out what we want to do and get more information would be my suggestion.
Any comments down here? All right. So my sense of this matter is that we're not ready to make any kind of decision. What I would request is, I, I'm going to sit down and talk with John Foster and, and the mayor and see what the sense is on the other side of the wall, about what they want to do. In the past, they haven't known and, and we'll see. If there's specific information members of this board would like to have in order to consider it, if you'd send a note to me and let me know specifically what you'd like to know, we'll do our best to collect the information that we can and then we'll come back to this matter. I'm, I'm torn frankly on it because it's October, right? And we don't have a whole bunch of time to, to consider that. In fact, one of the questions for John Foster is, I'm not sure what the process is for changing the charter anyway. There may not be enough time for city council to even change the charter, right?
It's not between now and Octo- and November, and January.
This may be completely moot, particularly since the city attorney is leaving soon. So if you have stuff you'd like to know, send me a note and we'll see if we can pull together. Meanwhile, I'll have another conversation with John Foster and, and let him know about this and see what advice the council and information he has or what knowledge he has. And I'll check with the mayor to see if he knows what they're thinking of doing over on that side as well. Yes, Mr. Rasmussen?
So I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Very good. The next item on the agenda, and I haven't forgotten you, Peter, is resolution on high stakes tests. And I'm going to ask Mr. Sharp if he would talk with us about that.
What's, the text of this resolution that we have before us is a bit in need of explanation. And I've tried to provide a Q and A on it, which the, you have a hard copy of the Q and A that I passed out earlier this evening. The, the electronic copy is on the website, but it's under materials for board review. Now, the Q and A describes a couple of basic things. One is, you know, why are we considering this resolution at all? And both the association of school boards and the Association of Superintendents in Virginia has felt that this issue of high stakes tests is of sufficient importance and sufficient problem that, that both have endorsed the, the idea that there needs to be a very, very substantial change in the way high stakes tests are, are approached in, in Virginia. And they are putting their ideas, both the, the board of directors of both organizations, has, has endorsed a resolution which we, we received in, we received the text of that. The text that you have in front of you has a few edits and they're pretty strictly editorial items. It also has a few additions and the additions are there to reflect some of our experience here in Falls Church with high stakes testing. They also reflect proposals that have gone to the Legislative Proposals Committee of the V S B A and have been approved by the committee, have been approved by the board of directors. But those, those items did not get cycled into the resolution as it was initially provided to us by, by V S B A. So I've added those, those things in and that's, you'll see those editorial changes and additions in orange in your, in your text. Now, there's, there's more in the Q and A, just, you know, some basic material, I, I think more for the public than for the school board, perhaps, about, you know, what, what are high stakes tests doing? How many, how many of them are there during the course of a student's journey from kindergarten through graduation? And, and, and so the, I, I won't go into detail on the rest of the Q and A, but I'll just say, I'll ask, you know, is, is what's been presented clear from what, you know, what you have in the text and the Q and A? And if so, I think we can, we can discuss it tonight. But again, my, my recommendation here is, is that we not take a vote to approve it tonight. It's, it would be part of our legislative package potentially, at least, you know, a summary provision that, that we support this kind of change, that the, be it resolved part, if you will, of the, would, would potentially become part of our legislative package. That needs to be adopted in November or December. In November, I think we, we need to be providing guidance for those, for, for me and anyone else who would be attending the delegate assembly of V S B A so that questions that are coming up before the delegate assembly, the, the board member who's representing us has, has the guidance of the board for that. And then going into the general assembly, we need to make sure we're, we're covering the waterfront that we want to. We can do that in, in December. So I hope, hope I've helped clarify why this is here now. I think, I think what we should do is, is have a chance to discuss it here initially and, and then see comment about it because it is, it is a very important part of, of our, of our experience as a, as a school system. And it, we, we often complain about it as, as a detrimental thing that's, that's holding us back from being even more consistent with a, with a 21st century style of education. And so I think we ought to allow for our staff to comment, for our advisory groups, those groups like special ed, like ESOL, like the gifted folks, the gifted committee, to be able to, to have a chance to comment on it and then we come back and be able to vote on it in November. And that will be timely in regard to the, the delegate assembly for V S B A.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. And yeah, this item is on the agenda tonight purely for information. We don't intend to take a vote on it, but wanted the board to have a chance to take a look and discuss it and ask questions of Mr. Sharp if they have them. And then we will direct it to be communicated to the community so people can give us feedback if they have it. I would say that at our visioning session this summer, there were any number of people there who, with pitchforks, who were, who were asking me frankly, how can we secede from the union so we don't have to do this testing? So I think people in the, in the community do have an opinion about this. So with that, I would say, are there anybody here who has a question for Mr. Sharp or a concern or an issue or a point of discussion on this matter? No? No? Anyone? Yeah?
I just have a couple of, of quick comments that'll probably get fleshed out. I, I think the superintendent said 2,500 students take 50,000 tests of various kinds, but maybe working that in. I think also working in IB and, you know, the rigor underlying IB that, that really is far more probative than what we get from standardized testing as well as, you know, the issue for what do you, what is, what is getting a 600?
what do you, what is, what is getting a 600 on SOL tell for somebody who could work far beyond that level? So I think if we can sort of borrow from the Declaration of Independence and have a bill of particulars as to all of the things that this does, it'll be more effective, although I don't expect it will be SOL free anytime soon.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Curtin, do you have any comment on this?
Well, I mean, personally, the students, there's, I don't talk to a single person who likes SOLs or is in favor of them. And I think we would all just agree that if we could completely get rid of them, that it would make everyone a lot happier. I think it'd make the teachers happier, it'd make the students happier. It would prevent students from being turned off from learning and having that actual intellectual curiosity almost beaten out of them for, you know, lack of a better term, because I really do believe that that's what the SOLs do when teachers are so strongly focused on the SOL tests. I know what we discussed at the work session past a couple of weeks ago, where messaging that to teachers would be important so that we don't place so much of a focus on the SOLs. But I really don't think that message is going to change anything with their existence still here and when we're relying so much on these SOLs and these numerical values for, you know, teacher evaluation and for student growth. I would also say that looking at the science and social studies SOLs to measure growth and even really the math SOLs, they're completely different tests. As someone who's taken them, I don't really think you can measure growth in math, even if you're looking at two students, when you're taking a geometry SOL one year and then you're taking an algebra two, yeah, algebra two SOL the next year, that they're not, it's not the same subject. It doesn't make sense. So that's, that's not really, and even something, it's the S G P, yeah, the student growth percentiles, that's something that the Virginia Department is working on. I'm not really familiar with that, but to me, that doesn't really make sense. I don't think that would be an effective measure, and I think stars are a lot more of an effective measure, but I would, you know, argue that students don't need to be tested that way either. But I know that that's better than the SOLs that we have. So I could, I could continue to go on and, you know, list everything that I have issues with the testing and the system, but I know that's not really productive or anything in that matter, but, so I'll stop, but thank you.
She has an opinion on this one.
Chairman?
All right. Yes, Mr. Sharp?
Couple of quick follow-ups. I, I think it's very productive, and I'd like to hear more of what students and parents feel about the testing and its effectiveness, its ability to help prepare students for what they're going to experience in, I guess, what's generally been described as college or career readiness. So I would love to hear more feedback and be able to reflect upon it and, and then act in, in November with that intelligence available to us. I will mention that in a recent poll across the U.S., in asking the general, the public if they had ever heard of the Common Core state standards, over 60% of the public said they had never heard of the Common Core state standards. And those are, of course, have been adopted by 45 states and the District of Columbia. They're the parallel to our standards of learning in Virginia. Virginia did not adopt the Common Core state standards. It might in the future, but so far it has not. And, and it's, it's amazing to me that, that this is so, so much talked about, the high stakes test is so much, so much a, a topic of conversation when, when I think people are talking about the quality of our public school education. It's, it's amazing to me that so many people just don't, don't understand the, the nuts and bolts of what's happening. And so that's another reason why I think we ought to put this off for, for a little while, to allow the community to have a better understanding of what's, what's involved before we go into the General Assembly session in, in early next year, have, have a good understanding of what, what we think is, is where, where this should go. I was at a forum over the weekend where both Terry McAuliffe and Ken Cuccinelli appeared. It was three chambers of commerce were meeting at the Northern Virginia Community College on, on Saturday afternoon, or Sunday afternoon, I'm sorry. And if you'll, I think many of you are aware that both candidates have, as part of their main focus in education, is, is a pretty hefty change to the SOLs. And they're usually talking about, about how do we make them a growth measure rather than, rather than what they are today? So there, this is going to be, whichever, whichever person is elected governor, I think it's going to be a hot, hefty topic for, for the governor's office and then an important topic in this year's General Assembly. Thank you.
Thanks. If there's nothing else, what I would say is, Ms. Curtin, if you would please collect information from your fellow students and bring that feedback to the board, that would be terrific. Dr. Jones, if you would circulate this resolution to our advisory boards and commissions, asking for their feedback, and I'm going to charge my colleagues here, as you move about your liaison duties for the next month, if you would please take a few minutes on the agenda of those meetings to let them know about this resolution, and we'd like feedback and input either delivered directly to you or to come and speak or send an email or whatever for our next meeting, so we can collect as much information as possible because this is an important topic. And thank you, Mr. Sharp, once again, for your, for your good work on these advocacy issues. It's great to have you in charge of that. All righty. I think the last business item that we have on the agenda this evening is the audit report on the school activity funds. Dr. Jones?
And I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Kimball tonight, but our activity fund audit report was some excellent, a great report. It, it gives you the beginning balance for FY 13, how much revenue was collected, 562,434, what those funds that were spent, 559,857, with an ending balance of just over 400,000. And anytime we do an audit, we're always looking for how we can get better. And the report is on here where they do go through and they audit each site separately. And again, this is for activity fund. And then they will do tests at each site, and they go and look for receipts, does someone forget to sign something, and, and look for areas where they can make recommendations. And then what we do is take those recommendations, we study those, and then try to, try to tweak our practice to get better. And so we do this every year. Again, it was a great audit. Our school sites are doing a fantastic job managing our funds, and we'll continue to work on the practices to improve.
Thanks. Were there any significant recommendations they made about processes or policy or?
There were some policy issues in here. It's more, I think, outlining our procedures and things that we know that we do in practice and have done for years, but they're not in writing. And most of their recommendations were, and it's a great idea now that we're getting to be a bigger school division, that we get more in writing. And so we're going to work towards that, where we're actually outlining steps and procedures for people.
All right. Thanks. Any questions or comments? Anyone? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the Falls Church City Public School Board accept the independent auditor's report, Falls Church Public School System School Activity Funds for the year ended June 30th, 2013.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney and Mr. Sharp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Are there any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. That concludes our business session. And now I would like to recognize Peter Davis. Thank you for your patience in sitting through that to come make your comments for the board.
Sorry for this email. The email was posted, I think, during, so, I think, it's been, I think, actually, sorry. The push button? We're green. Okay. So hi, I'm Pete Davis. I'm a citizen of Falls Church of 24 years and an alumni of the school system K through 12, 1995 through 2008. So I'm here to first applaud your recent commitment to Priority 1.3 in the School Leadership Work Plan, which calls for real-world, project-based learning and student volunteering and participation across the community. This is a wonderful priority and a first step towards ensuring that Falls Church students develop the skills in public action and civic creativity that are necessary to sustain and develop our nation's civic life. And the recent shutdown has shown us that our nation's civic life desperately needs some sustaining and developing. So thank you for Priority 1.3. And I'm also here to remind the board that there are effective and ineffective ways in which this priority could be realized. For example, simply requiring volunteer service hours has been shown to be an ineffective way of building serious civic skills. First, having only a quantitative goal absent a supportive structure encourages gaming the system. And secondly, volunteering when not paired with understanding the context of the public problems and challenges that might necessitate such volunteering in the first place teaches little about active citizenship. Another ineffective way to realize 1.3 would be to make civic education a voluntary elective. If we are serious about teaching students science, we make science part of a course that they're required to experience. And if we made science or physical education or sex ed or foreign languages or math or any other skill set that we've openly declared is something that is very important to expose students to voluntary, it would only attract those crazy ones who are already exposed to that subject. So likewise, if we make civic creativity an elective, it will only attract those who are already exposed to civic creativity. And that's ineffective way to, to achieve Priority 1.3. So I strongly encourage you to realize Priority 1.3 at Mason with something that is integrated and effective, a George Mason High School Public Project Program that makes the imagining, developing, and implementing of a public project an institutionalized part of each Mason student's civic education experience. The vision has been emailed to you, is outlined at GMHSpublicproject.org. And in case you haven't seen either yet, it's in this proposal that I got bound today, and I have eight copies for you. So the school system has a chance to come out of our community visioning with a concrete initiative that answers the call of Priority 1.3. This is something that is new and different, but why should Falls Church schools be on the cutting edge of everything but civics? Indeed, realizing such a vision is easier said than done. It requires a conversation among all the stakeholders, but I hope we can get started this year on the path towards making the stream of a public project for every student a life lesson in civic creativity and democracy reborn in a new generation, a reality in Falls Church. So I'll give this to you to pass to them. Thank you. And stay strong.
Thank you, Pete. All right. I love that passion. Next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. I'll, since it's 10:15, I'll try to keep it nice and short. We do have several seniors who've been recognized as national merit semifinalists and commended scholars, so I hope you've seen them in morning announcements. And also, just as a reminder, an outgrowth of our community visioning, which Peter was just talking about, another aspect of that is the Technology Forum that will be happening on October the 21st. And so we're encouraging people to register for that who want to be included. And we also are starting to message and have worked with all of the principals in the school sites to let, let our school community know that we will have a technology shutdown on November the 1st at the evening, and it will go through the Saturday. And so all of our staff are going to work to adjust assignments and things of that nature to do a technology upgrade. It's something where a team of Dell engineers are coming in, and we couldn't do it until after TJ was online. And there is no good time, quite frankly, to actually try to find, a night was not easy. But again, that will happen at 6 o'clock on November the 1st, and it'll be through the Saturday. Dell will be working with us on that. And other than that, that's it, and I'll save the rest for next month.
All right. Thanks for that consideration. Board and student liaison comments? Let's start tonight with Ms. Maeve Curtin.
Okay. So first, I would just like to briefly go off the letters from Ms. Bruce and Ms. Offenire about the Short Wednesdays. I've had discussions with many students at the high school about the way our Short Wednesday system works currently, and I think many students and also a few faculty members would be very interested in getting rid of Short Wednesdays entirely and instead moving it instead of twice a month at the high school to once a month late arrivals, sort of like our parent-teacher conference systems. I know that it's something that's been discussed before, and I have brought it up with Mr. Guy before he changed schools. I don't know what the legal implications are, but that's just something to consider. Fairfax does do that. Also, we had a wonderful homecoming weekend this weekend. We won our football game, which was amazing. The fans, I, it was an amazing crowd. We had so many people. The stadium was packed, and that was just a really great environment. This Thursday, our volleyball team has their Dig Pink fundraiser, so that'd be a great thing if you guys have time to get out to that. Our volleyball team's doing very well this season, and there'll be lots of fans out there. It supports, I don't know what foundation it supports, but it's for breast cancer research. And then finally, at the high school, there are parent-teacher conferences on Friday, so all the students are looking forward to sleeping in for that. The middle schoolers have a tailgate, actually, on Thursday, so there's a JV football game and also the JV volleyball game. So it's great to see that the middle schoolers are still getting a chance to participate in high school sports and that they're really being welcomed and integrated into the community. And then also, there is a Gifted and Talented Night, the former TAP program now known as Academic and Creative Endeavors, that will be held on Wednesday, October 16th at 6:30 for all parents interested in learning about the changes to our gifted program.
Thanks much. Mr. Chaney? Mr. Raznick?
Yes. Just a couple of quick things. Attended the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee meeting. Just a few things to be aware of. We were visited by the city's planning director, and he sort of went over some of the new proposed changes to the W O and D trail, which are really interesting. I encourage you to, to look on the web and see some of those changes. It kind of mimics some of the stuff that they've done out in Purseville, but basically doing some beautification efforts at both the sort of East Falls Church and West Falls Church side of when people are coming into the city. And some of it's pretty knockout in terms of what they're looking at doing. Also, once again, participation in the league sports is growing at a pace that they have concerns they're going to be able to staff the, or accommodate fields and things. So they are feeling the stress as well. Also attended, last night attended the organizational meeting for the Special Education Advisory Committee, and they, well, we put together the calendar for the year of meetings. And I do know that they have at least one meeting where they'd like to invite the new members to the board early in the year to just sort of give them a 101 on everything that's going on there. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Raznick?
Just a few things. Went to my first peak meeting, the Professional Employees Council, and given the fact that they were rather, the room was rather empty there, I think they'll be very happy that we approved a whole bunch of new additions. So the, the meeting next week will be a bit different. The daycare board, the, by now, the ever-important tether ball should be in. Everybody seemed very focused on when was the tether ball going to be there. So it's apparently not the 20th century, or it is the 20th century, not the 21st. The band boosters were very appreciative, and I sent a note to the superintendent about scheduling changes that were made. With the eighth grade coming back, some of the more advanced musicians were not paired up in a way that really worked. So Ms. Huron, you know, she's, she's new here, but she went through the channels and everything got fixed within a matter of days, so the band boosters wanted me to pass on that. They were very happy, very appreciative. I'm very excited about the fact that we've got school bus cameras, you know, going in soon and hopefully sometime around November, rolling out so that we can stop what happens on Gray Falls. As the superintendent said, we went to the, the Mount Daniel Neighborhood Meeting with the Fairfax neighbors, the Drainsville Supervisor, Supervisor Faust was there. And we, we heard an earful, a lot of it was about how the old Mount Daniel renovation had gone, so we, we took it in the face and let them vent. But there are clearly people who want to, you know, move forward. And ironically, just before coming here, I exchanged emails with a couple of the Neighborhood Association board members, and one said, you know, "Thank you for asking how back-to-school night went. I'm going to email people because I think some people didn't notice it happened because the, the street was blocked off, and unless you had to drive up." He said, "Almost no one walked up. Everyone took the buses." So it may have been an event that just was not noticed, which is certainly a... So it may have been an event that just was not noticed, which is certainly a nice change for them. And then I just want to make one comment about a, a couple of weeks ago, we went through teacher evaluations, and Dr. Jones explained how the teachers had been involved in, you know, making what I think are really rigorous sets of evaluations. And as I was going through it, I thought only in Falls Church would teachers, if you wanted to be ranked in the highest category, they would decide that you had to, and this is a direct quote, "A superior teacher relentlessly follows up with struggling students with personal attention." I mean, relentlessly follows up, and then it talks about emails and phone calls and, you know, personal talks, stopping them in the hall, seeing them at lunch. I mean, it really says something about the teachers. And we have a couple here, including one who was inflicted with my son just last year, that they would set their own standard as relentless. And I think that really says a lot about the teachers and the schools as a whole. Thank you.
All right, very good. Ms. Hyland?
I attended the first ESOL Advisory Committee meeting, and just very briefly, I couldn't find my notes on my way here, but I do recall hearing from the staff at all the schools that our population of ESOL students has grown greatly over the past year, particularly at Mount Daniel and George Mason, interestingly enough. So there's just some concerns about staffing, I think, across the board. That comes from both the staff and from parents on the committee. So it's just something that we need to be sort of mindful of, and I know Ms. Hy was there, and she probably has a lot more insight into that than I. And I went to the George Mason PTSA meeting last week. Very interesting presentation, these two women who, or three women who run this program for coaching children in organizational skills. And, you know, it's always a lively conversation, lots and lots of Q and A at the end, way more than probably they intended. But, you know, parents were very interested, and it was a really good presentation, so I enjoyed that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Custier?
Was at the Gifted and Talented Advisory Meeting last month, and I was glad to see that everything there is fully staffed up, all the slots are filled, and in fact, that we have people waiting to get on. I was pleased to see that. There are some comments, and I think we'll want to look into this down the road, about with respect to vocational and arts components of Gifted and Talented, what sort of impacts that would have on staffing. And I think there were some well-founded observations there that we'll want to follow up on. Let's see, one of my spies at MEH is telling me that there's interest in getting sports going there at the MEH. So it's, I think, I was heartened to hear that there's some traction there. Cherry Street seems to be proceeding apace. And then the last thing that I would say that was just an interesting observation with respect to testing, I'm teaching a law school course on professional responsibility, and all semester I have been, you know, trying to get them to think ahead to what it's going to be like to practice. And then last class, I put some multiple-choice questions up for the bar equivalent of the ethics test, and I asked them, you know, "Do you guys like this, having these questions?" And they just ate it up. And so I sort of was struck by the irony of here you're trying to teach these deeper, long-life skills to students, and at least when they get to law school, they're eating up the teaching to the test. So that is an irony that I will leave others to ponder, but I was struck by it, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you. The Chamber held its annual mini-golf event about 10 days ago. It was the most successful of their mini-golf events that they've ever had. Weather was quite good, but the, I think the innovations that they've put in to have better atmosphere for families, including bringing in a fire truck and a Humvee, and also with the help, with help from one of our city council candidates, Mary Beth Connelly, a moon bounce for the event. It wasn't just mini-golf, it was, it was a whole variety of experiences for young families and their kids. So it was a, it was a really, really neat event, showing kind of the outreach of the Chamber to families in the community. They also have been encouraging one of the philanthropic groups that's recently been sort of reborn in our area, in the form of something called Brothers Brother Foundation. That's a rebirth of what used to be an activity called Crosslink that was supported by a number of different religious organizations and others in the area to provide medical supplies and other supplies to developing countries. And the Brothers Brother Foundation has a new location in the Merrifield area off of Prosperity Avenue. I did attend the mixer that they had there this evening. They're off to a great start. The Brothers Brother Foundation was originally based in Pittsburgh. Still, its home base is there. This operation in the Merrifield area is a branch for them, a new endeavor into Northern Virginia. And they're getting great cooperation from Inova Health Systems, from the Seventh Day Adventist Health Systems, and other health systems around the area. Elementary PTA is tomorrow night, and I'm wondering, that's going to be at Mount Daniel. Is the transportation changed for that, for the PTA meeting, or is it the usual parking situation as in the past?
It is the usual parking situation for PTA tomorrow.
Great, great, thank you. The Creative Cauldron had their fifth-year celebration at Arts Space in Falls Church. They had their most successful gala ever on this past Saturday night. And they, as you may know, run a number of workshops for, in which children participate throughout the year, mainly in the summer, but throughout the year. And I think they're a great addition to the community for theater and music. They do just a great variety of entertainment that I think appeals to adults and kids, and I really enjoy their work. On October the 24th, the Fairfax Partnership for Youth is holding its annual reception and silent auction at, it's at an apartment complex in McLean. It's mainly an art auction type of activity. There's a beautiful reception room that they meet in that is, if you could imagine, the entire sweep of this room on three sides, being windows looking out onto Tyson's Corner. That's the, that's the atmosphere in which this reception takes place. It's really, really a very, very striking evening. It begins at 6:30, so all the lights are going by that time. It's 6:30 to 9:00. And if you'd like to join us, it's a $25 ticket in advance, $35 at the door. Information is at FairfaxYouth.org. And I'll just ask if the chair might comment a little bit this evening on progress on revenue sharing.
I'll be brief, none that I'm aware of. The superintendent tells me there's a meeting tomorrow to discuss.
You know, there's a meeting, that is some progress. Silly me. Just a few things for folks. First, if you'll notice in your additional materials on, for board review and community review, we have the 9:30 enrollment figures for our little school division, which, if my calculations are correct, show that we have about 150 more children this year enrolled than we had this time last year or in December, and many of them in K and many of them in grade nine. Second, we've had a busy start of the year here in the city with our schools. The Business in Education Partnership had its first meeting of the year at TJ in the New Media Center, and everybody was just agog. They got a tour of the building and a chance to learn about the project, and it was a great meeting. I also want to say that at that meeting, we had a lot of conversation about the support that those businesses provide to the schools throughout the year, and how we can do a better job of communicating to the board and to the community the support we get from our businesses, because it's not insubstantial. And so Mary Beth Connelly has agreed to put together a communications plan on that. And I do want to thank all of those businesses that participate on BIU and who participate by providing just the wide variety of supplies and other things to our schools. We couldn't do it without each and every one of you. We also had, oh, and I presented the triennial plan to the BIU folks, and it was extremely well-received. There were a lot of great questions, and so I think that they appreciated that work that we had done, and now understand what we're about. We have had our first SEEK meeting of the year. I presented the triennial plan there as well, and once again, had lots of questions and a great response. There was a good deal of interest on their part in the operational effectiveness study that we're getting ready to do, so we'll make sure that they're notified that we've approved that and we're going to move forward and maybe get more information in the next month's meeting about what that's about and the details, so that they understand it a little bit better. And last eve, was it just last evening? We had the Falls Church Education Foundation meeting for October, and presented them with the triennial plan and had a range of discussions. I would simply say that things are going swimmingly over at the foundation. Deb Hiscott and her board are doing a wonderful job of raising funds and are looking forward to dispersing those into our schools for some priority projects for our kids. And with that, I would remind my colleagues, as you go about your liaison assignments, please make sure that you take that triennial plan to those groups, get on the agenda, introduce it to those people, whether it's a PTA, or a band booster, or a PEAK, or, you know, whoever it is. We want to make sure everyone involved in our schools understands that plan and what our areas of focus are. So please, if you haven't done that yet, please do, and answer their questions. And then finally, I want to thank Dr. Jones and Mary Beth Connelly and the staff at TJ for the wonderful celebration that we had last night to cut the ribbon at TJ. There were many members of the community there, there were many kids there, and I think people are really impressed with what we've done with that building. I'd remind the community that that building was delivered on time. In fact, some parts of the work early, because things we thought would be done in December are done now. And it was done on budget, and in fact, a little bit ahead of budget, because we have about six more classrooms for the $10 million that we invested than we had originally thought we might have. And so Dr. Jones, and you and your team and your staff just did a tremendous, tremendous job. It's a really cool little building for cool little kids now, and they seem to just love it. And that's, that's the end of my comments. The next thing we have on the agenda is the approval of minutes from September 30 and September 10. And I would ask for unanimous consent to approve those minutes. Okay, without objection, so ordered, those are approved. And if there's nothing else, we will adjourn for the evening. All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, very much.